Six o'clock. And I would love to have a motion for to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Claffey?
Yes. Counselor Wood.
I move to approve of the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Counselor Arrowood.
Oh, Campbell.
Campbell.
The other beard is guy.
I'm looking.
Damn.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Kessler, could you color roll, please?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. And now that brings us to our first slide of top topic of discussion tonight, which is a discussion of cancellation of summer city council meetings. Mr. Blair? Man.
Good, good evening, Mayor Claffey and members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Um, as you know, traditionally, the Stanton City Council has canceled either one or two of its meetings in the summer months. For the past two years, you've canceled the first meeting in July and the first meeting in August. Clearly, it's purely at the council's discretion as to what and how many or any meetings you would like to cancel this summer. Again, traditionally, it's either one or two. In the past two years, it's been the first meetings in July and August. If you're prepared to make a decision tonight and can inform us, we'll have a resolution at the next meeting. Or in past years, there's been some discussion here and maybe not a fully, not fully ready to make a decision and the city manager, she sent out a poll. And via email, whether you wanted to cancel one or both or none. So I will leave it to you all to discuss that amongst yourselves here. If you're prepared to direct staff, we can have a resolution at your next meeting. Or if if you're not prepared, but we're happy to send out a poll.
I mean, I'm inclined personally just to say that I would do the same thing. The first meeting in July and the first meeting in August. And it's not, you know, it's not for us at all. This is more for staff that they have the time, you know, that to take vacations and do what they need to do with their families. Instead of attending to our questions or whatever and just give them some time off. And that's, I'd be fully supportive of that.
I want to, I want to point out the other side of it. I mean, I'm 100% in favor of eliminating the July 11th meeting, 7/11. You know, we all have to go to a store and get serpents that day, you know? Anyway, the July 11th has always been canceled. But if you go from, I'm just looking at my calendar, you go from about 6:20, which is June, something in June. And then you only have one meeting between there and late August. And it makes it a bad meeting and a lot of stuff gets forgotten. And we're not, we don't absolutely keep up on everything. And I would definitely recommend we do away with the July meeting because that's 4th of July. But by August 8th, all the kids are back in school. And that's the week that school starts and things are kicking back up. And it's not like that's summer vacation period anymore in Stanton anymore. I mean, the summer vacation starts in in May, it seems like nowadays. And then, uh, so I would, I know last year we had some tough meetings in September. And and it was disjointed there for a while over the summer. And and I would recommend the one meeting only. But I'm, I'm more than willing to do whatever council recommends.
Mr. Blair, has it been, Amanda, I don't know if you've been here long enough, has it, has it been an issue with? I'm just curious. I mean, as far as staff's preparation, I mean, it'd been a problem if we take the two off or? I mean, I'm, I could vote either way. It makes no, makes no difference, but I'm just asking.
I'd have to look at records to see the length of those meetings to mayor's point, and I don't have that handy right now.
Um, discussion after those meetings, I remember they were very long. We had to add many things to the agendas and they were very long. And so, you know, what didn't happen in the summer made December harder for staff.
You got to get it done.
You have to get it done. And I agree, we went a very, very long time without getting together. So I see both, I see both good and bad there.
I agree, July would be good to do, but yeah, we ended up having like a 10:30 ending meeting in August or something like that. Obviously, it depends on what comes in front of us. I mean, if we were talking about two, the first one in June would be the other one because that's dead in summer.
Good point.
But I, you know, I don't find a particular honor is to come in every two weeks.
So June and July instead of July and August? Look. So you're saying possibly first weekend, first meeting in June, first meeting in July?
If we, if we felt we wanted to do two, I feel like, because that would actually be family vacation stuff.
Right. And that's my only thing is to give staff all.
Right. That's a better idea, Brad. Have staff send out a poll.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine.
Yeah.
Got old.
Old it is.
All right.
All right.
That brings us, old is, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is a sister city update. And I see Mr. Bland is here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I don't actually know what they've got to look at or anything, but, uh, is it just list? Okay. All right. So since I, since I spoke with you last, I had actually already started developing a firm foundation for sister city programs. I've been sort of working on that over the last couple of years anyway. But I really kicked it into high gear after I got that positive response from you all. And so I've already met, just as an example, I went to an early coffee meeting with one of the Qantas groups and talked with one of the rodeo clubs already. And the Frontier Culture Museum and I've talked with the Woodrow Wilson Hall, House, Robin von Seldenek. And I'm starting to build momentum and interest among the, you know, to create a foundation for the program. So that we don't get ahead of ourselves. I'm not even thinking about what a committee or a citizens group could even look like yet. I'm just trying to build the foundation for this so we can create a sustainable program. So in the meantime, Kylie and the staff were able to pay dues and, and we're now official. And so the cutoff for getting into the new directory for this year is the end of this month. So we got in under the wire there. And so interesting little development came up. And so we'll just talk about this for a second. So in the directory, there's two parts of it, and I may have shared this with some of you before. But the first part is all the cities by state in the U.S. and then who their sister cities are. And then the last half is the inverse. So it's all the countries around the world and then the cities there and who they're twinned with in the United States. So Stanton will show up in two places at least, but could be more. And so under each city, it lists all your sister cities. And so we got Kylie and I had a little meeting, we got scratching our heads, and he did a little research, and it turned out to be a lot of research. He is a whiz at this. So what he discovered was that there are actual documents that, that I think you've got copies of or you've got information about them. Yeah, yeah. So he found the actual documents that got these relationships in place from the very beginning, which was even more than I had expected. And so the question arises, how do we want to list Stanton in the directory? And this is kind of a procedural thing, but Kylie and I thought it was important to come back to you all real quick. Just give you a quick update, tell you I'm, I'm kicked into high gear anyway. And so, you know, Stanton could be listed and then its sister cities could, could be Voscholda Suce Romania, Dabush, Hungary, Skopje, North Macedonia. And then Kylie also discovered there were actual letters traded between Stanton and Hort, where the German house came from, that's at the Frontier Culture Museum. And they've sent their band here twice. Of course, there's the thing ongoing with Bruce Fox and Gerstolfin, which is another side of Germany. And then you also found something on, I forgot the other one. I'm missing one. Brands. Oh, yeah. So in all of my discovery around town and talking with people that have been here all their life, or at least before I moved here, there was apparently a very popular visit by a French choir. Okay, some of you are nodding your head, so you know about this. So a lot of people have a very fond memory of this. So I'd always sort of thought, put that in the back of my head, that maybe that's something we could pull on, you know, French sister city. I wasn't sure if there would be a connection here. Well, Kylie found a letter that had been exchanged between the two cities on the occasion of that. So you've got the basis for listing any and all of these as relationships. One other thing we did was we looked at Wikipedia. And sure enough, the three original ones, Romania, Hungary, and well, now North Macedonia are all already in Wikipedia. And so if you go to those cities, it says that they're connected with Stanton. And then if you go to Stanton in Wikipedia, it says we're connected with those cities too. So that's kind of another data point. And then the last thing to consider is there's actually three ways to list a sister city in the directory that everybody in the world will then look at. You can be a formal sister city. You could be a friendship city, which is, and I alluded to this last time, it's kind of like you're dating. And then you could be an emeritus status where you've tried your best and you were formal and everything, but now you've called it quits. And it's kind of like, it's not, I guess it's kind of like a divorce, but, but you don't get rid of it, you know, because you probably had children. So you honor the relationship and you just put it in the merit of status. So anyway, we don't, well, we have this opportunity to do that. And so that's what the question came up. And I don't know, Kylie, did you have a recommendation about that or did we want to just see what they thought or?
Yeah, I guess we're just looking for a directive on which, which ones we want to have listed, which ones we want. Revitalizing them. I think the Romania is, there's the most documentation for that.
There is, and there's been a lot of visits back and forth. And in more recent times, their mayor, receiving guests from Stanton, has acknowledged the relationship. It feels like the beginnings of a firm sister city relationship. It's been going on since of all these times. So, and it's not really ever faded. It just, it has a potential for a lot of development. Yeah.
Has there been any recent communications with this, the Romania or?
Define recent. I mean, not since the pandemic. But there have been visits before, just immediately before that, within the last, less than the last five years, where there's been visits to Voscholda Suce. And they've received our citizens and treated them royally and, yeah.
Fred, when you were talking to some of the groups that you went around trying to shore up some support and see if there could be a base, what, what did you hear from them about possible locations, what they thought of the current sister cities? Did, did you get feedback about that?
Yeah. So some people, a lot of people scratched their heads on these three. And so I quit to tell them the, the quick stories on all of them. There are very good reasons for why they're there. And everybody just sort of acknowledges that. And then, then I get the feedback of like the French connection. Well, what about that? We had this wonderful visit. And then everybody seems to be excited about a possible connection with John Lewis's home in Donegal, Ireland. And then also, um.
You gotta have some Irish, isn't it?
I know.
Yeah, right. And then, and then, and then something with the German connection and it could be both. I mean, there's no law about that. There's, you can't have too many relatives. And then, and then I haven't pulled this thread enough, but in time I brought it up, the possibility of an African connection. It's definitely of interest to a lot of people. I'll admit to you, I haven't gone deeper. And I, I could do better and I could do more on that. But I've never gotten anything negative about that. In fact, sometimes the response is, oh, yeah, why wouldn't we do that? You know, just, it's a, it's a thing. And there's a huge momentum within sister cities to add 500 African cities over the next five years. It's a, it's an under, uh, it hasn't been tapped to the extent that it should have been nationwide. And so the State Department is hugely supportive of that. But they also, at the same time, suddenly there's this interest to renew or revitalize Irish sister cities. You know, I think I mentioned that last time, random, but it works out well for us if, if y'all are interested in me pursuing that too. So, yeah, but we don't have documentation on, on the Irish thing.
They all sound good. I mean, like I said.
Yeah. I mean, this is the kind of thing, it's a really feel-good thing. There's nothing bad about any of this. There really isn't. And.
And, and is there no limit?
No. I mean, there are cities in America that have 30 sister cities. I would say that would be a little too many for us to manage. But I mean, you get to the point where you reach a comfort zone and you're like, we're good, you know?
Yeah.
Remind me, we, at Frontier Culture, we have Ghanaian farm. Is that right?
It's Nigerian.
It's Nigerian, okay.
And it's this very specific area of Nigeria, Igbo. And there's a reason for that because people have done DNA studies with families that have stayed in the valley since severe times. And there is a documented sort of a connection, genealogical connection with that area.
Perhaps that would be something to pursue.
Well, obviously, the Frontier Culture Museum already seized on that and they've already got a relationship with a university in the Igbo Nigeria region. So it's not like we have to start from scratch. We have some sort of direction, if you will. The test, the true test would be getting community support. If the community doesn't support any of these, it's probably not worth our time. I mean, it's just something on paper, which is what we've been sort of admiring for the last decade or so.
I think it makes sense that, to see those natural connections. So the Nigerian connection is because there are people here. There's an Irish connection, obviously.
The German one.
German connection, obviously. So not to be random about our choices, but I mean, it sounds like we're identifying some good places. And I mean, I think we do need to look geographically beyond Europe, which seems like many of them are traditionally in Europe. So, you know.
Right. Yeah. No, you're exactly right. Yeah. I mean, there is another State Department push for Polynesian. You know, anything that's bordering on the South China Sea, I guess, the whole island region, they're trying to shore up the sister city relationships there. I'm not suggesting that we look into that, but I'm just giving you examples of what's going on nationwide. There are good reasons for other cities to do those kinds of twinning, but perhaps not Stanton, but.
Yeah, but finding those connections is nice because it just makes it more natural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions from counselors?
You said that Frontier Culture has seized on that connection. They're connected with a university, but it could go further. I mean, there could be other connections other than.
It's endless. And I, I actually have the experience from since the 80s to today about all the possibilities. And I have a vast network within sister cities and now we do, because we're members that we can pull on. And so the sky's the limit on, on the kinds of things we can do. And again, it's not creating anything new. It's leveraging all of the cultural and educational and in any institution or church or whatever, schools, the whole nine yards here in, in our city, and just simply leveraging that and adding an international layer to it.
Yeah. I just think it's better to go deeper than wider, perhaps, so we can make maybe some closer connections than too many connections.
And so starting out, which is how we would first appear in the membership directory, could be these three historical connections. And maybe even since he found the documentation, you could list friendship cities for some of them, like the German thing. Because, you know, it's kind of an obvious, the house is here and the people that were involved in that are still here in town and very excited. I talked to Frank Stressler just yesterday about that. Oh, do you remember that? And he was like, he started speaking German to me, you know, he said, he remembered it like it was yesterday. And he's like, I'd really love to see that relationship continued and.
I think that's important. I mean, when we have people that have that strong feeling about it here, that we do make sure that we include that and whatever.
Good point.
Yeah, the ones that exist, definitely. Got to keep those together.
Yeah. Kylie, what do you think? Is this a good discussion or?
I, I think if, if we want to go ahead and list those three as friendship cities.
Well, the, we were thinking of the Romanian one as a full sister city because we've had so much dialogue back and forth. That feels solid and is the oldest. And then, uh, the newest one is Skopje, North Macedonia. I don't remember what the language was in that. I know Robin Von Seldenek is committed to helping us develop that, you know, with other ties to the community, but certainly offering their initial connection as sort of the, the, the base for that relationship. She's sort of, she's willing to kind of keep managing that so that it doesn't, you know, get lost or whatever. Yeah. The Hungarian thing is probably the weakest of the three, though it is, was formalized. That could easily be a friendship city. Interestingly enough, the signs when you come into town say sister city for the Romanian one. But there's a different term they use on the signs for the Hungarian one. I forget what it's called, partner city or friendship city or something. So there is sort of a basis to list that one as a friendship city. Yeah.
Do we have the ability to make the signs here at city level?
You do.
Yes.
I only say that because I'm having signs made for Adopt a Stream for Lewis Creek, one of my other hats. And the city's doing a fine job of that, so.
So we could customize our signs to recognize any of that?
You did those other signs that we did.
Well, good. Let's, let's just plan on that because that's an in-house job.
Works can churn them out.
And, and I mean, as far as having, should we wait until someone from that city visits us? And then that could be the, the point where we want to document this and, you know, and formalize it?
Yeah, for, for making a formal sister city, you kind of want that anyway. So you're absolutely on the right track there. So if you've got some connections, you've got the basis for a friendship city. But you're right, if you've got visits back and forth, that's, that's an indication from both sides. That's a marriage, if you will. That's a sister city, full sister city relationship.
How about the Igbo? Because they always, they, they're here every year at the Frontier Culture.
Yeah, and I'm only discovering this. I need to have more meetings with them over there. Right now, the village is a little bit, I think, in disrepair. And so they, they cautioned me to, you know, don't get overly excited yet, give them some time to get it restored. But you're exactly right, Alice. It's, there's, there's something there. I don't think we've ever documented it though. So it's an opportunity. And, and if we do that, it's also an opportunity to develop additional community support for that so that it's not just one thing and the one bright shiny object. You know, it's, it's more community-based.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm totally willing to do that and work with anyone on that. So.
I just don't know how many hours in a day do you get? You get more, right?
I got enough hours. I helped Shelburne release trout this morning. Yeah, I just do it during my sleep. I enjoy this stuff.
Did you plant any trees today?
Not today, but Tuesday, we put two at the Valley Children's Advocacy Center. We did two trees there for them. So when you drive by there, you'll see them on both sides. So. Yeah.
Oh, you're going to get Stanton Citizen of the Week award.
It's not my goal.
I know.
All right, well.
Any other questions? We thank you for your interest and your support of the program and we back you 100%.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much, Fred.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, good.
And the next item on the agenda is the discussion about the nominating committee process. Mr. Blair?
Uh, Mayor Claffey, Counselor Arrowood has asked that this item be placed on the agenda, so I will turn it over to.
Sure, I'd like to, I just brought this up just to discuss the idea of formalizing the timeline of nominations committee thing. Just because it, it feels like it shifts around by when the meeting happens, how much notification we get for it. Sometimes we get a few hours when we're reading the names of the, of the results of the nominations committee. And it would be, it would be nice to have it more in a dependable timeframe so that we could all take a look at it along the way. And I talked with Kylie just to be sure I wasn't suggesting anything that was too onerous and would put too much work on, on him for a separate part of it. And we had, he told me that seven days for the, for the agenda, a full agenda to be published would work just fine for him. And then after the nominations committee meets, a minimum of three days for the actual nominations to come to us. These would not be public, just because that's, that's part of it. We cannot give that out. And I mean, this, this would just put it more in line with, with how other commissions and committees work. For instance, Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals require five weeks before the meeting to have everything finalized and put out. And Historic Preservation Commission requires, let's see, three weeks before their meetings. I'm not saying anything like that. There's more documentation involved in those. But it would, I feel just be good to formalize it and give us more, more time to be able to review applications and things. Not any change to the nomination committee itself.
Comments from the nominating committee?
Well. And, yeah, Amy and I have talked. Brad and I had a conversation after I got off work. And then, um, a lot of the timing, I mean, I will admit, a lot of the timing is probably me. Because trying with my work schedule.
Yeah, your work, you go into the evening sometimes and all that.
Two different pharmacies and everything. It's just, it happens to work out that usually a lot of times is that Wednesday right before the Thursday, um, you know, meeting. So that is probably, that's the reason for, for the timeline. You know, and, and like you and I talked, I mean, I feel that it's, you know, based on some of the research that we have done before, I like what we do better because we're actually meeting and talking to each one of these people. And in some cases, we meet and maybe this person we figure as may not be the best fit for this particular thing. But we say, but maybe when a meeting or when a position comes open here, it might fit well.
Oh, absolutely. And this would change none of that.
Yeah. And, you know, and, and you said, you said it wouldn't. That was the only thing is that, um, I would, I would really hate for the person is that, you know, the three of us get together, have a really good meeting and heart-to-heart discussion with this applicant and, and say, hey, they are, they are the best fit for this job. And as I told you, and I hope it just doesn't embarrass Mr. Blair. But it, you know, there was in the original, when we were looking for our, for our city attorney, we looked at several, of course, came down between two. And on Zoom. looked at several, of course, came down between two. And on Zoom, um, John's probably gonna go, did you really feel that way? You know, my first, my first inclination was the other gentleman because of the way he came across just on Zoom. But he said, we need to see you in person. John blew everybody out of the water.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, you know, when it came right down to it, I mean, that in-person thing is being able to communicate what you believe, being able to communicate. That, that's a big thing for some people. They can't perform, you know, in open. So that would be the only thing that I would, I would be a little worried about is that if the, the committee said, this is the person after we have met with them, after we've talked, got their ideas, we feel like they are the best person with it. And then we get in, in here and the other four members say, no, I don't like that person.
That's a, that's a possibility as it stands. Uh, you know, it doesn't change any of that process. And I still, you know, this doesn't change the nominations committee purview is to specifically meet with each one of these people, uh, as it is, and it changes none of that.
So what's, what's that gonna help with?
Just to have more time. Well, there have been times depending on the timeline when we get the list of nominees for specific committees and commissions about three hours before the meeting. And often these people weren't on an agenda at all, uh, when it came out, just because it, it, it came in afterwards. And I'm not implying any strangeness in there, but I mean, it just ends up being a little bit pressed in, uh, of a process on that. And this would formalize when it like, you have to be on the agenda seven days before, just like there's a cutoff for planning commissioner, BZA or Historic and the other ones. And if you're not one of the applicants seven days before, then you would be considered for the next one. And I mean, I don't think a week before is too heavy of a deadline on it.
So if they're not an applicant, if they haven't applied for the most recent nomination committee, but let's say we've already interviewed them. And Kylie has all their credentials and has, you know, we've talked to them and we go through the interview process. They're not on a li, they're not on a list, but we, you know, to be interviewed that time.
You mean like somebody you talked to like two months earlier or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kylie said it wouldn't be an issue to list them specifically on an agenda.
Okay.
Like these, this is one of the people that has expressed interest in this position. It would be, these people are interested in library commission, committee, um, and that. So, you know, again, primarily I wanted to be sure I wasn't putting anything overly heavy on Kylie, uh, on this, since he's the one that runs it all. But he says that would not be an issue and that you keep records of everyone who is interested in certain ones on that too. And it would just give it more organization and more lead time. And it wouldn't take anything away from nominations committee and it would still be an internal process.
Could, I mean, I mean, based on like I said, work schedules, whatever. I mean, you do realize though, that if we do that, then it's going to delay
Appointments.
that appointment by at least two weeks.
Correct.
I mean, because.
Cause they'll go for a whole month.
The nominating committee in the past has always met the first week, first Wednesday of the month. And that basically cuts out your first meeting of the month because there isn't enough time. So, so basically you could have the nominating committee continue to meet on the first Wednesday of the month, but the only time we would ever make it on agenda would be the second meeting of the month. So that would delay getting people started.
So that's, that's the traditional schedule is the first.
No, we.
It moves.
It, it was.
It was. Like I said, I'm the limiting factor or unless, and I've told, I've told Kylie, I said, if, if I can't be there and it's getting to be so much of a problem, I said, by all means, y'all two meet. Yeah. The only, the only problem would be if you have one likes this, one like that person, then you like come to longer heads. But, um.
It's not been an issue.
But it had been an issue with this, you know.
But let me ask this. If we were to get the names ahead of time anyway, would we be able to challenge anybody you chose anyway? Is that part of?
Right. You can. I mean, it's rarely if ever.
The decision would already have been, the nominating committee would have already made the decision.
And told the person.
No.
Oh.
No, they don't. They're not told until after councils voted on it.
Yeah.
But the nominating committee will already have taken action at that level. And then it will be coming to council. So, and you know, I'm not sure what kind of vetting council members are gonna do.
Right.
Once you get the names.
Right. Yeah. I mean, it just.
Well, very little if you only have three hours. Uh, but you know, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's a thing where I, I, I don't think we've.
Very little if you only have three hours, but if you have a week, what, what is, what is the process of you getting it for a week and looking at the applicants? And what would you do? You would share your
Well, yeah.
likes or dislikes?
Well, no, but I think it is, I think it is important that you all are the nominating committee, but I think you would, uh, be open to hearing feedback from your other council members just on, once we review applications of who we feel is qualified.
That's changing the whole procedure now.
I mean, no, it's just sharing, it's just sharing thoughts or.
Council still votes on them at that. And nominations committee is a nomination. It isn't an appointment. Uh, council still has to vote on each one. Usually we do it as a group because I mean, we've never had an official issue with anybody, uh, you know, on it. But it is, I mean, it's like the planning commission. They give us recommendations and nominations is a recommendation. And if, you know.
But because they're the ones that interviewed them and.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So in this case, it would just be a matter of, yeah, having more time and, and it's just part of the process of getting the best and the brightest for committees and commissions for the city.
Well, I guess that's my concern. If you're not going to share the information with the public, but you're gonna be looking into, you know, you get the list of names earlier, which I don't have a problem getting feedback from any of you all about it. But if we've already decided as a committee, I mean, I'm gonna, you're gonna call me and say, hey, I have found this out, blah, 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 blah. Well, okay. Thanks for sharing. But then we're gonna come back to council and still nominate the people that we agreed on.
Right. But if there's some strange scenario and four of us think, you know, it's, it's an issue with somebody, and I mean, it hasn't happened since we've been here. Uh, but in that case, we could say, well, actually we don't think that person is right. But we can always do that anyway. And this gives us, gives everybody more time to vet anybody that, that's being nominated.
I'm, I'm good either way. Either way, it's fine.
I'll just note, I also reached out to Kylie and my, my thing was I was just, it was confusing because we had two nomination committees. You all had two meetings in March. At the second one, when we appointed, uh, someone to the EDA, I was just surprised to see that because it was not on the agenda for consideration the day before. And I understand you selected someone that you interviewed earlier in the month, but it would be nice that if that was the thought that at the agenda, you would, it would at least say, uh, this opening is also being considered because it lists who you're talking to. So that was the only thing I was surprised at. I was like, wait a second. I thought this person was interviewing for a different position earlier. So I just had to, I reached out to Kylie just to see what the story is.
So when somebody puts in an application that had
But I agree that someone, I should, you shouldn't have to, yeah, you shouldn't have to interview them again. I totally support that. Once you all feel comfortable with someone, it would just be nice if they were under consideration. That was reported in the agenda for the meeting at hand.
Yeah. These are all the people interested in this, whether you interview them that meeting or you did three months ago.
And then, and we've, at least what we've been told, I mean, I'm very proud of the way we handle it because I've been told, we've been told that in previous, a lot of previous councils, they just get together and say, hey, I like this person. What do you think about that? And like, let's put them on. There was no interview process.
Without an interview process. I'm, I was aware of that.
Yeah. I don't, yeah. And this, this kind of takes it out of any kind of question. I don't know if we need any actual action.
No, this is a work session. It's a discussion.
Disgust.
It's business.
That was fine.
Well, I guess the question becomes, do we want to ask Mr. Blair to prepare something for a future meeting?
Yes.
Implement the what?
Implement the change of procedure.
And then, well, and then the other option, you know, I, and I, I know I told, told Brad that too. The other option is changing something midstream in seven or eight months, there's going to be a new council and that new council can make any changes they want, wholesale changes.
The whole process.
Right.
You know?
Well, that's true about anything. Uh, they can change whatever they want.
So, yeah.
But right now we can change whatever we want.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, just instead of doing something midstream, that's, that's another option is to, to do it.
I mean, I don't see a need for a change at this point. I was just, like I said, it would be nice if the agenda reflected what was going to be considered at, that was my only.
Yeah. I think that's doable.
I think. Yeah. I mean, we can, we can definitely just on our own try to, try to accommodate, you know, what makes the members feel better.
I'm just glad library board has two new members.
We did that in one fell swoop. You.
That's my only, and I, I think you bring up a good point because the boards and commissions that have vacancies, you know, they do want those filled.
Yeah.
And they want them filled as quick as possible.
Yeah.
So it is incumbent upon the nominating committee to try to get that done. Um, and, you know, as quickly as we can. And, you know, I, I just don't, I don't want to slow that process down. It's taken us a little while, it feels like, to get to where, okay, we're really like ticking them off and we're getting through, you know, the list. And I think, you know, I don't know how Kylie keeps up with the list because the list to me seems like it's ever changing. And it's like, you think one minute, oh, I don't have any committees that really need, you know, people appointed. And then we get that list and it's like, you know, a laundry list of, of ones that still have.
Kylie's an organized person.
Kylie is an organized.
Well, that's, and that's specifically why I'm not suggesting anything like, you know, BZA or planning or, you know, those are, you know, five weeks out, but there's a whole lot more documentation involved with all of those. This way, Mark, you said Wednesdays are better for you generally?
Generally Wednesday, it's like every other because I get off at two o'clock and, and then I come in here.
But in this case, you guys could meet the Wednesday before a council meeting. Does that mean the previous, there like week before? And you guys could vote on it at the end of the meeting. That would meet all requirements.
See the previous, the Wednesday before that, like every other, that I'm there from nine till seven. So what we can do is our, our, our meeting, our meeting before the council, our meeting before the council, we would have the agenda, we would vote on it. And then two weeks later, we'll let them come bring, send it out. And then two weeks later, we notify. I mean, yeah, I mean, if that. It would have to be two weeks.
That's the only downside.
It would have to be the next council meeting.
Generally speaking, like Michelle's happy about the library board having its members. That's because we took action. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this, I mean, what I'm specifically, like what Kyle and I had talked about would be seven days. The agenda comes out complete seven days, at least seven days before our meeting, like, you know, last Thursday, for instance. And then the results of the nominations committee would, would have to come out three days, you know, before the meeting on that. And so then it's, you could have met last Thursday.
Let's, let's agree that we're going to attempt to notify.
Well, I know, you know, attempt to, I mean, the planning commission doesn't get to attempt to, um, there, there are specific requirements in that. And this, uh.
But their information goes out when their whole agenda packet goes out. It's not the same as where there's a separate meeting and they're trying to arrange, you know, interviews and scheduling and things like that. When the planning commission agenda goes out for their monthly meeting, it's all in one document. It all goes together. So they know what is going to be on it. That's the only thing that I think is going to be difficult because if you start putting these specific time constraints on it, you know, what if, again, I mean, it could be last notice, but maybe Mark can't get to there. So he's then looking to see if somebody else can be there or we're getting there. Or if we can't get there, you know, can, what if the people, you know, what if we don't have enough to interview or what, you know, pushing it out. There's more moving parts to it, I think, than what generally happens with the planning commission's agendas when they come out, you know, before their monthly meeting.
And I do want to just bring up, we brought it up a little bit, but because there was a lot of times where Mark was unavailable, I suggested to Amy and, um, Alice that if Mark couldn't come, would it be okay if, if you asked somebody else to go in your stead?
Yeah. And that was something I think, I said, we'll talk to the mayor or whatever.
Right. And so if that's something that we can agree on, then we don't miss any more meetings and, and roll along easier.
So our meetings now are the fourth, fourth Wednesday. Yeah. So the agenda would have to come out on the third one, third week, third Wednesday, Wednesday before, then we meet. And then when we meet, we want to nominate.
And then we vote on it at the following month's first meeting.
But, okay. So the agenda could come out the week before, but we're going to end up meeting on that fourth Wednesday. The, the council would meet on the next, I mean, the very next day. But according to your, your things, it couldn't be done until the first meeting in the following month.
It would only be when that aligns with the second Thursday. You know, it would, that would be like a blue moon situation.
All right. Enough. We've gone past our time limit. We're not going to vote on anything tonight.
No.
We're going to leave this as an open topic. If someone would come up with a formalized policy, then we could discuss it further. But I understand we're all going to try to notify one another and give as much credibility and
Absolutely.
time as possible.
Okay.
And then let's just move on to our next.
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Mayor, could I offer one potential?
Quickly.
Alternative, which is what, what has been mentioned. There could be an alternate member of the nominations committee nominated by the mayor or nominated by the mayor and voted on by council. And then that would, there, there could just be an alternate as well. If I, that sounds like it may clear up some of the issues. If they're that way, there, there would be an ability to meet.
I think that's a good idea because, you know, you never know what is going to come up. And so if, you know.
Is that your small group?
Do we just do?
It's a small group. Right.
Do we just take it upon ourselves to contact another council member? Do we need to assign someone? It doesn't matter to me. I mean, I just think that having a, somebody that knows, hey, I might have to do this would be a good thing.
That's only if Mark can't make it on the fourth Wednesday.
Or if something like you're sick or I, I have to be out of town or something. You know what I'm saying?
Right. So we don't push it back no longer. But that's not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is having the agenda come out a week before we even nominate? Is that what the, the question was?
Agenda comes out by, by this, agenda comes out a week before.
So we.
But nomination notification can be three days before.
Interview them.
So effectively, if the nominations committee met on the Monday before a council meeting, it would still be able. Well, if it was Monday.
Would not be the agenda because the agenda had been published on previous.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
So it just delays.
I think, I think we're, we're beating this to death.
Yeah. For that three day nominations.
We do not have a con, consider a formalized statement that you are interested in. And let's discuss.
Yeah. Well, we'll get it more specific and laid out in front of us.
Thank you.
Let's keep working on it.
Thank you. And I'm moving on to the last topic, uh, which is a discussion about city residency for city boards and commissions. Mr. Blair, again.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey and members of council. Um, we'll try to keep this short. At your last meeting, you had talked about the possibility of requiring residency for city boards and commissions. As a result of that, I did some research and as you know, state law in Virginia does take precedence over local law. So four of your boards and commissions already have this. Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Equalization, and the Electoral Board. Every one of those members has to be a resident of the city of Stanton. Interestingly, the Agriculture, Forestry Advisory Commission, Committee, the state code doesn't say they have to be residents. Four of them have to be landowners, but there's no residency requirement in the state code. but there's no residency requirement in the state code. Economic Development Authority, I found this really interesting. Every locality I've ever worked in, I've not seen this, but it says you have to be a resident of the locality or an adjoining locality. So technically.
Which we had.
Yeah.
Actually, did have that situation.
And Captain Campbell from the airport was an Augusta County resident. And that was during, Greg, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I know who you're talking about.
But didn't he?
Not because.
No, not because he got.
Okay.
But you are, for any other board and commission, if you wish, you can have a residency requirement. As to working, I put in the memo, there are two considerations. One would be, what do you consider working in the city? If I had a business, I lived in Augusta or Harrisonburg, but I had an office space at the Innovation Hub and came here once a week or twice a week to meet with clients or business, business opportunities. Is that working in Stanton? So full time, part time, and then do you want the working requirement? If you, if you wanted to go down that path, is it at the time of appointment or does the person have to work the entire time?
And I read all of your notes on this and I came up with a second line because I'm the one that brought this up. And, and I thought maybe the rewarding might be a resident or business owner at the time of nomination. And I think we have some business owners for the Wharf, let's say, and some Stanton businesses. There may be Augusta County residents.
Correct.
But they are more involved in our downtown Stanton than many of the people that live on the north side are. And so therefore, as a business owner, if you are interested in the issues, you know, in control of the downtown Stanton, I think you should be able to be on a board or commission and be an advisor. And just do it at the time of nomination. And then if times change, the next time around that when the nominating committee reviews your application, and if you are no longer fitting the criteria, you would not be considered the second time round. But you could be on for your term. And I thought that would solve the. Does that make sense?
I think it's a good idea. Because, and it's not just downtown. It could be, you could be a business owner anywhere.
Anywhere. But, but if you are a business owner in the city of Stanton, you, you have a vested interest.
Yeah.
Yes. So is that a, is that a suitable?
Sure. Again, except for the boards I listed that are in the state code, but I can have a policy next meeting for you all to consider.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
A plus for efficiency on that.
All right. And we're going to go to a quick break and we will be back at seven o'clock for our regular meeting. Good evening. It's seven o'clock and I call the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council on the April 25th, 2024 meeting to order. Would everyone please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. For this evening's invocation, I ask that we simply take a moment to give pause to consider members of our community who are in need, who are in pain, who are grieving, who are facing challenges in their lives. Also to ask that we keep these individuals in our thoughts and prayers, to continue to work together, to help those in need, and to always be there to support one another. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The first item on our agenda tonight is a proclamation. I'm going to start out with a proclamation for Arbor Day. And is our city horticulturist Matt Sensible here?
Some.
Step right up, sir. And I will read this. This is the City of Stanton proclamation for Arbor Day, April 26, 2024. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Stanton is being honored this year for the 28th time as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that April 26, 2024 is hereby designated as Arbor Day in the City of Stanton. And City Council urges the residents of Stanton, the region, and communities across the country to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to warm the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness where there, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed, adopted this 25th day of April, 2024. Present this to you. Just you have a few words for us now?
Well, thank you all for having me. It's, it's spring and the dogwoods are in bloom, so it's my, my turn to pop up down here. This is our 28th year as a Tree City USA, so that's, that's an honor in itself. You know, as far as progress we've made over the past year, I'm sure people are tired of me talking about the big storm in 2022, but we did hit a pretty good milestone where back in December, we were able to finish replacing all the trees. So we lost documented 142 trees lost in that storm and every one of them has been replanted. So I'd hoped to get them in a little earlier than that, but the drought sort of set us back a little bit. This year for Arbor Day, we're kind of doing our usual thing, sort of keeping it kid focused. So tomorrow morning, we'll be down in Gypsy Hill Park at about nine o'clock. The fifth graders from Ware Elementary are going to come over for a field trip and a visit. So myself and Willow from the Environmental Department. And then our Augusta County Forester are gonna just hang out with the kids. We're going to do a little bit about the stream, talk about trees and water quality, teach them a little bit about trees. And it's also a really unique opportunity because they're going to get to see the, the beginnings of the restoration program that's going to be going on down.
Thanks.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Matt. Back last year, I know we talked about you were working on replacing a lot of trees that we were, had blight and everything. How's that process going or is it finished or?
You know, it's really an ongoing process. We've always had a policy in the park. If we take a tree out or we lose a tree, we replace it. It may not be the exact same species. It may not be the exact same location, but that's kind of an ongoing thing. So in addition to the storm trees, we've probably put in about 30 to 40 this spring, just for those that we've lost. So there's always something new every year. There's new pests and disease that are constantly being imported. So we're kind of working, Matt, and trying to manage some of those issues as we go.
Any other questions, council?
No questions, just a thank you.
Thank you.
Because I think you did a fabulous job and it's evident for everybody.
Our city is beautiful because of all your work.
Glad you enjoyed it.
I remember last year.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll talk to you a bit later.
Thanks again, man. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you.
No, no, no.
All right. And our other proclamation today is for the Letter Carrier Food Drive. And I understand we have from the National Association of Letter Carriers Branch 513, President Stoney Karikoff, Food Drive Coordinator Megan Vernon, and from the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, Volunteer and Food Drive Coordinator Emily Brown, and Senior in Child Nutrition Programs Coordinator Ally Henning. Would you all please come to the front? We didn't take a picture. It's not you, brother Mike. All right. This is a City of Stanton proclamation for the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day, May 11th, 2024. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, nearly 2 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for the hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in Stanton. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 32 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2024. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Stanton City Council on May 11th, 2024 is hereby designating the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. In the City of Stanton, we encourage the citizens of our community to support the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive by placing non-perishable food items for donation to the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank in or near your mailbox on the morning of Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier and volunteers will pick up your donation and together we can all help to feed our hungry. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this April, this 25th day of April, 2024. Thank you. All right. Let me figure out who all I have here. Who's going to speak first?
I'll talk first.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sure appreciate that.
Please go ahead.
Well, thank you so much. As Mayor Claffey said, Saturday, May 11th marks the 32nd anniversary of the nation's largest single-day food drive. The Blue Ridge Area Food Bank is privileged and so grateful to partner with our local branches of the National Association of Letter Carriers. This year, it's incredibly important to participate because the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank has been seeing demand at rates higher than before the pandemic. Since the beginning of the year, we've seen a 31% increase in guests coming to our partner agencies across our service area asking for help. And so it's really important that citizens of the City of Stanton and surrounding areas leave out non-perishable foods. No glass, please, because it busts really easily. But that gets taken back to our headquarters. They're in Verona. We'll get sorted and it'll get redistributed to our partner agencies across our service area. So what's donated here stays here. And we are really, really grateful for the extra work that the letter carriers do on this day. So not only do they do their regular routes, but then they pick up these bags of food or really big bags of food and then bring them back to the loading docks where that we can sort it for, we can sort it for distribution. So we're incredibly grateful for their extra work. Stamp Out Hunger has brought in, wow, 2,481,430 pounds of food nationally since its inception, which has helped provide 2,087,858 meals to neighbors in our community. So those numbers are local for the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank and we are incredibly grateful. Last year, Stamp Out Hunger collected 115,809 pounds of food, which is an incredible thing. And we're distributing more food than ever, than ever before, like I said. And a lot of times when we think about people experiencing food insecurity, we think that it looks a certain way, right? Like people have a certain type, but that's not true. One in 12 people in our community experience food insecurity. It could be your neighbor. It could be the person who makes your coffee. It could be the person who checks you out at the grocery store, literally anyone. So it's incredibly important to participate. We're so grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A year ago, I stood before you and that's a new president who knew nothing about nothing. And a year later, here I am, still the president, knowing a little bit about nothing now. We were given this proclamation last year and as my, my first year as the branch president, I'm proud to say that the City of Stanton, and you all should share in this too, because Branch 513 in Stanton won first place in the nation for a branch of our size, raising 40,178 pounds.
Go Stanton.
Give yourself a round of applause because that's amazing. To my knowledge.
Oh, my.
It's the first time that I know of that Stanton, as far as the postal service and the NALC has been put on the map like this. I plan on keeping us there. So this year, we have got bags that were purchased through donations that are made by local businesses as well as our AFL-CIO brothers and sisters. So we are asking once again, Stanton, please, brothers and sisters, come together and help us. Help us help the community again. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
We've, I've done this now for seven years and each year it's gotten bigger and bigger. Last year was the biggest year ever. Stanton has some of the best people I've ever met. I've had the privilege of delivering just about everybody's mail in Stanton. Now I'm downtown and I still get to see them because they all come down. We are promoting. I have a bunch of business owners downtown that's doing flyers for us. We're getting ready to put out the yard signs. Got a couple of big places that will be seen. So we're hoping this year that everybody can help that can because it goes to everybody in our community. It's a small community and lots of people know everybody. Some we don't know, but we see them all the time. And even downtown, we get a lot of people from out of town. We're having three big drop locations. Stanton City Games is a location, Frontline Hobbies, and the Stanton Courthouse is doing a drop. So even if you can't put it at the mailbox, you can drop it downtown and that way it helps everyone.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Um, Emily said most thanks for the food bank, but I'll just say, um, I'm a relatively new resident of Stanton. I lived for about a year and a half. Um, and it is such a privilege to live in a city that cares so much about the community and about its residents, and it's also such an honor to work with our letter carriers. Um, and we are just so, so, so grateful for all the hard work that they do, not just to stem out hunger, but all year. So thank you guys so much, and yeah, thank you so much, it's a privilege to be here, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're coming for a picture.
Oh, me.
I mean, I can, I should.
We'll get the bag so nobody can see me.
What?
I had these pork pants.
You're fine. I'm all dressed like.
I am barely better.
We'll bring this in too.
Hold up, all right, everybody, all right, one, two, three, snap a couple.
Congratulations again.
We get this every year.
Ran out with the other, gets this picture.
He laughed, he was like, that's all. Got some real good ones too. Thank y'all.
Well, that's a fun, fun fact. Number one in the nation, that's great. Uh, next item on the uh agenda is the mayor's report, and I think I need to start out by uh asking our newest employee of the city to stand, Samantha Johnson, who is our new Director of Tourism. And uh she's coming to the fore. Would you say something, and welcome to Stanton, we're glad to have you. She's been working here for at least three days.
Day number four. No, uh, my name's Samantha Johnson, and it has just been such a pleasure to, to join the Stanton community. And I, oh, go ahead, and it's not telling anything you don't already know, this team here is incredible. And just everybody I've met so far has just been so delightful and welcoming and encouraging, but also knowledgeable, extremely knowledgeable and, and open to sharing that. So I'm happy to work for you and with you and, and see what we can build together. But if I can be of any assistance, or if anybody ever has any questions, also anybody in the community as well, uh, please reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, yeah, let's see. I met Samantha this morning at the EDA meeting, we were at, at eight-thirty this morning. And I, we had a interesting speaker, we had Jay Langston, who's the Executive Director of the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, which does a lot of promotion up and down the valley. And we're one of many uh he comes to speak to periodically. But I thought he brought out a couple of facts that I thought I'd share with everybody. And that fifty percent of the interest in economic development in the City of Stanton comes internationally, and I was never aware of that before. You know, you think uh, you know, your businesses, you know, are gonna be from the country, but fifty percent is now coming in internationally. So we are not aware of these people, but they are interested in our city and our, our region. And uh it's something that, that, that's very, it, it had a lot to, uh, it definitely sunk into my head today. Um, food and beverage seems to be the dominant industry out here in the Shenandoah Valley. There's a lot of uh agricultural going on out here, and there's a lot of um interest in that industry in particular. And the third thing he talked about today was the electrical power that is needed to fuel any business. And it's astonishing that, you know, if you had a uh electricity, you know, if you had a pole, you had enough electricity, but all of these companies that are coming to the valley now that are uh, they have incredible energy needs. And we um, we have some, I'm not gonna say we have everything that is needed, but we do have some energy needs, but they're talking megawatts. So we understand it's an ongoing issue that we're going to need more and more electrical power as time goes on. So that was an interesting morning session. At one o'clock, uh, we met in this very room again with fifty students from Stanton High School. These were Jared Hatcher students, uh, government in uh history, juniors and seniors. Uh, uh, John Blair and Amanda Kaufman were here, Josh Knight was here. Uh, uh, Ruth Turner from the school system was here. And they, they sat out there and um let me talk for about, oh, ten, fifteen minutes, try to explain what we do here in the city, and, and then we threw the floor open, and they had a lot of great questions. So uh it went on, we all, we all took a chance, took a turn speaking for a couple of minutes, but the uh, the questions were varied, and uh it was, it was a great, great interactive session, went on for about an hour. So uh, we have some, some kids that we can be very proud of in this city. So it was a neat, neat afternoon. And that's all I have, so I'm gonna turn it over to other members of council, give me some updates. Who wants to go first?
Sure. Um, let's see, uh, this last Saturday and twentieth, I had a chance to meet the new uh Director of the Shakespeare Center, uh, Miss Vanessa Marusko. Um, really dynamic person, looking forward to uh what she can do uh with Shakespeare Center there. It's just, that was a really great uh thing to do. And then um, on Sunday, the fourteenth, I had a chance to go to the Shelburne Band Concert uh there too. And that was, that was a lot of fun. Those kids really work hard, and uh Charlie Nesmith, John Wilson, they're running that uh thing. They have such a huge participation in band in middle school, they recruit in the elementary schools, and, and the kids come in before school and practice when they don't have to. It's just so great to see everybody so excited and that.
Very good. Comments from councillors?
Um, oh, go ahead, were you gonna go, Alice?
No, go ahead. I just wanna say I was at the library advisory uh board meeting uh maybe a week ago, and so I like to brag on the library because we have such a great library. And uh, the Director of the Library, Sarah Skorbus, gave us some interesting statistics and uh just activity in our very small library. Um, the activity in our small library, year-to-date, twenty twenty-four, is bigger than Augusta County's eight libraries combined. And so our little library has a lot of support in our community, and our librarians and uh everybody that works there uh works very, very hard. And I just wanna brag on their uh social media presence. So if you are on Facebook or please go to their Facebook page and follow them. Please go to their website um and sign up for their newsletter and find out all the fantastic things that go on daily uh at the library. They have book talks, they have a little lunch music every month. So many things happening um at our community library. And I also wanted to remind everybody that, and to congratulate our seniors, who will be graduating in about three weeks. And I see uh a member of our school board, Mr. Bob Boyle, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think um Stanton City, Stanton High School is graduating on May nineteenth. If we have, do we have any seniors in the room graduating? No graduates, but perhaps you have children or relatives who are graduating soon. So um, let's be thinking about them and um wishing them a, a bright future.
I just wanted to make a statement, so uh Stan High School, uh my cousin, uh Kevin Madden just accepted the head coaching position at Stan High. Yes.
New coach at Stan High School.
Yes. A long time coming, and I am happy that he accepted, and let's see what he can do
Yeah.
to bring Stan High School back
To your family, yeah.
On the map, yes.
Outstanding.
Yes, go Stan.
That's good news.
Yes.
That was exciting when I saw that.
Yes.
A great reference to your family, that's awesome. Uh, I just wanted to remind folks about the fishing derby that's coming up.
All right.
Which is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, it's the youth fishing derby. And usually it is a big success and lots of children.
Yes.
Early in the morning. There's, there's signs up around the park.
Don't go to the dog park that day.
Probably not, so just cross your fingers for good weather, because it's usually.
Usually it's raining.
Yeah, it's usually raining and cold.
But, but they get a lot of fish, it's very exciting to see.
And I have one more announcement to make, that uh Building Bridges for the Greater Good is having their uh breaking the bread this Saturday at uh Bogota T. Washington Community Center. It's from one to three. And this year, they are coming together with different people that showing up, like housing and, you know, businesses uh and different act, different uh scenarios where you can come in and you can be a part of the discussion and maybe some action steps involved. But if you're in uh the area from one to three at the Bogota T. Washington Community Center, it's Building Bridges for the Greater Good, breaking bread.
Very good.
Mayor Claffey, I'll just share that uh I got a chance along with councilwoman uh Woods, Darby, and Edwards, we attended the um, it was a spring local government event at Augusta Health um to, to learn more about the updates from the hospital and all the
It was amazing.
amazing work they're doing in our community, especially with their focus on take, taking healthcare out to the various communities in our region now. It's uh exciting work that they're doing just to get more people access to healthcare. Um, but we also got a tour of their brand-new uh cardiovascular expansion on the third floor of the hospital, which um, I don't know, it's a, it's an amazing facility. We're, we're pretty fortunate to have such an incredible healthcare facility with uh, with our region.
Here we are.
Yes.
I was working that day, sorry, at the hospital, that's good me. What's the court groundbreaking?
Well, we did get to that, didn't we?
Yeah, we all did that.
And we had gold shovels.
Gold shovels and white hard hats.
And we are off and running with a uh, a tentative completion date of November twenty twenty-five. And um they're actively out there, so uh everybody keep their fingers crossed that we don't have any issues and we can get this new courthouse built in record time.
Got something I could say.
Go ahead, Mark.
Um, this is something that um, and we're gonna try to, to help a little bit in our budget. But that I learned um, our, the feds and the state have cut, which blows me away, I don't understand it, I, I just don't get it. But just in our local CAC, the Children's Advocacy Center, that takes care of young girls, young boys that have been, have been abused mentally, physically, uh sexually, I, and they have, for some reason, cut money out of their budget. So I'm asking, I'm just putting it out there, that y'all that I'm looking at, those over the airways, if you can hear me, if you can donate anything to the Children's Advocacy Center to help this program continue, because they took out sixty-five percent of their budget this year. Next year, it's a big one-zero-zero. One hundred percent of the budget from the CAC coming from the federal government is going. I, I just can't fathom that, um, how you take it away from kids. But in any case, if you can donate anything to the CAC, please, in your heart, consider it, please, thank you.
On a similar note, I will notice that uh this was brought up at Augusta County Board of Supervisors last night, and they're advocating some state money to replace the loss of federal money, and they're hoping that during this budget session that's coming up, it's gonna be discussed.
I hope, I hope.
It's on the agenda, I've heard. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we get some additional funding for that necessary. Uh, the, the location of that place is out there on Greenville Avenue, and they've really done a, a nice job in that facility. I believe uh councillor Edwards and, and uh city manager and I went out and toured it last fall, and, and they really do good things out there. Any other items by members of council? All right, that brings us to the uh consent agenda for tonight's regular meeting. Per, per council procedure memorandum number fourteen is the policy of city council to have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If a separate discussion of any item is requested by any member of council, that will be removed and considered separately at the end of the agenda. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda? Hearing none. The consent, consent agenda tonight concerns the approval of minutes of the budget work session of the April fourth, work session, regular meeting of April eleventh, consideration of the resolution to establish the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, consideration of resolution to appoint Ms. Linda Nesselrod as zoning administrator. Uh, these are the items, I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by councillor Woods. Mr. Kessinger, please color roll.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Voting case.
Thank you. Brings us to the next item, which is a recognition of Ms. Aswara Avine, the Shelburne Middle School student for the Virginia Municipal League If I Were a Mayor Contest, Region Three Winning Essay. Ms. Avine, would you come forward, please, with your family? All right, this is something that the Virginia Municipal League has put out in their publication for the last couple of years, and I have brought it to our school superintendent every year. And uh I said, boy, it'd be great if we had some entries. So by golly, we got some entries, and not only do we get an entry, we got a winner. Mr. Boyle, would you come up and help me present this, please? We have Bob Boyle, who's the vice chair of the
Kind of hard time getting this.
Congratulations, and this is the Virginia Municipal League If I Were the Mayor Essay Contest, the regional award presented to Aswara Avine at Shelburne Middle School, April twenty-fourth. Congratulations, and the best part, I'll let Bob give it. Dollar gift card.
Get the whole family.
Real quick.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Her principal is in the back.
Yeah. The principal and, and this teacher.
Of course.
Oh, absolutely. More than Mary.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we have a VML representative as well.
Ms. Hunter, sorry.
Ms. Hunter.
I am, and that's her teacher, Ms. Hunter.
And we have a VML representative as well.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, no, come on up here. We just smell behind you.
That's how I was recognized, I kept looking at him. I love the pink. Pink sweater.
How many phones you need, Josh?
This one's not mine, I promise. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, sweetheart.
Congratulations.
He looks lovely.
And your family, and I guess that's your story.
Thank you, glad we're here.
You're not too proud, are you, Dad, huh?
No, Dad's always proud. Brothers are proud too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
That's right.
All right, someday you'll be mayor, you take over my son.
It's a Tennessee look. Liz Ash.
Grandma, we're having a very big night between the letter writers and the VML winners. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing in consideration by request of Colby Shover to rezone five thirty one Calvert Street from B two General Business District to R two Low Density Residential District. Mr. Blair.
Mr. Mayor, we will have our Director of Community Development Rodney Rhodes present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey.
With a new title.
I know.
Glad to have you. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. As the mayor noted in the introduction to this public hearing, Colby Shover is requesting a rezoning of five thirty one Calvert Street from B two General Business District to R two Low Density Residential District. The property contains a single-family dwelling, which appears on the Sanborn maps in nineteen oh nine. This structure appears to have been built as a single-family dwelling. To the best of our knowledge, it has always been utilized as a single-family dwelling. However, it has been zoned B two General Business District since the city's comprehensive rezoning in the late nineteen sixties. Mr. Shover is now in the process of selling the property, and the requested rezoning will help the purchasers obtain financing. That's one of the issues when you have non-conforming properties. Banks are a little leery to, to loan property for a use that's not permitted by rights. There's some issues if the, if the house burned down. Could it be rebuilt? No, actually couldn't. So that's one reason why people go through this down zoning of property. If you, if this request sounds very familiar, it is because back in twenty twenty, five fifty Calvert Street was rezoned from R two to, was rezoned to R two Low Density Residential. And back last year, five thirty seven was also rezoned to R two Low Density Residential District. And this is in an area that certainly staff would like to see maybe a comprehensive rezoning of the rest of these lots after we update the comprehensive plan this, this year. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on March twenty one, twenty twenty four. And after conducting the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request. And on, on a five to zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of this rezoning. I'd be glad to take any questions you have this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Members of council, do you have any questions? Does the owner wish to speak? Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Colby Shovers. Thank y'all for having me here tonight. Like I said, we, we fixed up the property, made it a lot nicer. And we just have a, a family wanting to move in there and make, make it their home. So I appreciate everything and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm about to open up a public hearing, and this is a time for the council to set aside to hear from citizens on this specific topic. We ask that you come to the podium. Please give your name, your address. Keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach your five-minute time limit, I'll let you know. Time has expired. I will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Mr. Kestner, is there anyone on the phone?
No, sir. There's no one with their hand raised.
All right. Seeing no one coming forward, I now close the public hearing and will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robertson.
I move the council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second that.
Mr. Kestner, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the next, next item on our agenda is a consideration of an ordinance to establish a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, starting July first, twenty twenty four, and running until June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, totaling one hundred and forty eight million, seven hundred and twenty four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. And of adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, fiscal year twenty twenty nine Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. Ms. Moyers, the city's chief financial officer, will be presenting this item tonight. Though one very quick question, does the council need any slide presentation? I mean, this, these are the numbers you've discussed during this budget season for the next four items.
All right, there you go.
Did you have any slides you were really proud of?
A lot of it is repeat information. It's things that you've already seen. So there is a little change to the ordinance that was in your briefing to the debt sinking fund number. It is the only difference between the proposed and the one that you're going to approve tonight is eighty five thousand. And that's the amount that was added to get to the fifteen-year term. So the total budget will be one hundred and forty eight million, six hundred and twenty seven thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars, a three point four percent decrease over FY twenty four. The general fund increased five point two percent, which was seventy three million, five hundred and three thousand, three eighty four. And then the five-year CIP is in the same consideration for a total of seventy four million, two hundred and ninety nine thousand, one fifty three. That is for our general fund and our enterprise funds. That is not an appropriation. That is a plan, a five-year plan. The appropriation, if it is funded through this budget, would be in the budget number. And that is all I had on the budget and the CIP. Everything else is the same as what we discussed last week.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the summary? Can you please give us the revised figure? Because that is not the number that is here.
I can.
And is anybody, who's going to make the motion?
I will, but unless
Just bring it and give it to Counsel Robertson. Instead of that seven twenty four. Go ahead.
You ready?
Yes.
All right. I move to adopt the proposed ordinance as presented, establishing and approving a budget for the city of Stanton for fiscal year twenty twenty five, totaling one hundred and forty eight million, six hundred and twenty seven thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars, and fixing other tax rates and fees as proposed, advertised, and considered for public hearing, and to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Darby? Mr. Kestner, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and I want to thank Jesse for all the hard work that you've done. This has been spectacular.
Yay, Jesse. That was, it's over.
We know what went into this and
Do you not want this back?
Oh, sure.
And the entire staff has done a lot of work on this, so we really appreciate that. All right, that brings us to, the next item is a consideration of ordinance to increase the water user fee rates. I will entertain a motion.
Do we all do in each one of them?
Yes, we have to do everyone on them separately.
Does anybody else want to?
Yeah, I can't make a motion. Mayor Claffey, I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restarting and reordaining section thirteen point two zero point zero two zero rates generally of the Stanton City Code to increase the water user fee five percent from three dollar, three dollars and eighty six cents per one hundred cubic feet to four dollars, six cents per one hundred cubic feet. And to increase the bulk water rate to ten dollars and fifty cents per one hundred cubic feet effective July first, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Woods. Mr. Kestner, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to item F, which is a consideration of ordinance to increase the sewer user fee rates. I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
Mayor Claffey.
We all got to take one.
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restarting and reordaining section one three point four five point zero three zero amount of the Stanton City Code to increase the sewer usage fee fifteen percent to five dollars and sixty cents per one hundred cubic feet effective July first, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kestner, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, item G is a consideration of ordinance to increase the stormwater control program fees and to reduce tier credits to a maximum of two-tier credits total for both quantity and quality credits. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Arrowood.
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restarting and reordaining section thirteen point oh five point oh five five Storm Water Control Program Fee of the Stanton City Code to increase the minimum monthly stormwater control program fee based on an equivalent residential unit, ERU, from three twenty to five dollars per ERU, with other tiers increasing proportionately effective July first, twenty twenty four, and to reduce the possible maximum tier credits from six to two as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
I, I just want to say one thing. I, as most of you know, I, you know, just for public consumption, I am, and I'm sure some of us up here definitely are averse to any kind of, any kind of tax increase on our citizens. We have done it so that the real estate tax, there is no increase in that. So, you know, because I just, right now, we're in tough times. People are going through tough times, put, like I said, putting food on the table, gas. Everything's extremely high. But please understand that when it comes to these water fees and it comes to sewer and all of, and stormwater, it's at the point where these fees haven't been touched in one twelve years, one fourteen years, and another was three, four, five. So it was coming to the, to the point that the fees were underwater. We weren't able to actually pay the people without borrowing from other, you know, other accounts. So please understand that this kind of is a necessary evil to try to make things balanced where we can pay our workers and not go in the hole on this. So
Keep the city running.
Yeah, yeah, I see. We, unfortunately, we do have to kind of keep the lights on and the people working for us and, and those type of things. So please understand.
Well said, Counsel Robertson. I think everybody on this dais agrees with you. So thank you for saying that. Mr. Kestner, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And once again, Jesse, thank you for all the work you've done getting all this done for the when, when do we get our book? I found, I found the book from last year and, and it's about this thick, folks. It's an awful lot of information in there. And I know now that we, we have approved it, we're going to, to get the book. And it's, that's some light evening reading for you, that's for sure. Brings us to matters from the city manager. I turn it over to Mr. Blair.
Mayor Claffey, just one very brief item. Mr. Robert, or, yeah, Counselor Robertson mentioned the Child Advocacy Center. Counselor Woods had called me earlier this week about that matter. Based on the budget adoption tonight, staff will be in contact in the coming weeks about that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
And thank you, Ellis, for reaching out to you.
All right, is that, is that all? All right, that brings us to matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters From the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to listen from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of Stanton City Council's Matter from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online at the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. Would anyone like to speak this evening under Matters from the Public? Welcome.
Kenneth Case. I live at nine oh four Blue Ridge Drive. I've been a citizen here since two thousand and five. I taught high school for twenty, thirty, thirty years in Florida, Fort Myers, Florida. And I moved here and I was disappointed that you fluoridated your water. And I've been trying to shed some light on that issue since I came here. I'm a cancer survivor. I'm the only survivor of the surgeon that treated my oral squamous cell carcinoma. I went to Hans Nieper in Germany. I went to alternative medicine. I went to a regular oncologist and he said I was going to die if I didn't do what he said. He wanted to cut a business card-sized piece of my tongue out, and he said I'd be tongue-tied. Well, I was a teacher. My father was an alternative person, and here I am. And he started asking me, what are you doing? And every single, the practitioners, the osteopaths, the chiropractors, the acupuncturist, Dr. Lee, a well, you'll see these things. Anyway, they told me, stay away from fluoridated water. So I started researching it. And I'm sad to say that when Dr. Larson, the last time this was presented, it was two thousand and seven or something like that. And he used this as his reference. It's the American Dental Association's fluoridation facts. And I think you've probably heard that people say that fluoride acts topically. It works in your mouth, not systemically. That's our issue. And the this is particularly difficult because I had put together a piece that was for you to go through and go down the list. And I was told you wouldn't work that way. I had to come here. So I'm, I'm at a disadvantage here, a tremendous disadvantage. But I just want to tell you that you've been fed misinformation. So just let me quickly just get this, and I don't want to burn my time up on this. But in here, it says the ADA is doing the right thing. They review available scientific evidence and revive its statements based on the most current scientific information. Sounds great, right? So over here, it says fluoride uptake goes into the teeth as they're growing, ingested or systemic fluoride becomes incorporated in tooth development, et cetera, et cetera. The reference is nineteen eighty six. In two thousand and nine and two thousand, no. Nineteen ninety nine and two thousand, the American Dental Association and the CDC, Science and Practice of Caries Prevention, topical, topical. This is in two thousand. They gave a reference in nineteen ninety They gave a reference in 1996, '86, I'm sorry. So they misinformed, and Dr. Larson gave this as his rationale. The biggest issue I have is that the Virginia Department of Health commissioned their toxicologist, Brian Dementi, to write a report fluoride in drinking water, but it was inconvenient. He said he couldn't rationalize it. He mentioned the cancer. And I sent you a thing that shows you that when you swallow that stuff, the acids in your stomach turn the fluoride into hydrofluoric acid, which is a tissue-damaging thing, and it promotes cancer. And Dr. Dementi mentions it in here on page 32. This was inconvenient, so they threw it out. But you don't do that. I taught science for six years, and I'm ashamed at what they did. This is still valid. It's referenced. And so I'm asking that somehow, I mean, the way I had this laid out, it was just logic, and then you pass this on to the medical community, and then they survey it. So I just don't how to deal with this thing. But anyway, the document that I put to you, well, here, wait, one more thing I want to show you. In here, it says it's impossible, impossible to, fluoride toxicity from ingestion of optimally fluoridated water is impossible. And then over here, it says, pardon me, it says there's no confirmed cases of allergy to fluoride or any positive skin testing in human or animal models. None.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, your time.
Okay, so how are we going to resolve this? How can I show you, people? You're going to spend $300,000. Right now, we're not fluoridating, and you need to see this. Some way, we have to...
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Case. We appreciate it.
Okay, so how, is anybody going to communicate with me, or are you guys just going to go blindly? I have documented it, and...
Allow us to analyze your documentation. Thank you very much.
All right. Here. Here's the, crap. All right, here's what I requested to, who do I give this to?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you. Randolph?
Randolph Burton, 211 Hendren Avenue. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for your time and attention. I'm speaking on behalf of the Talking Book Center, or TBC, and I am here this evening to express our sincere appreciation for including the center in your budget for the upcoming fiscal year. To my knowledge, this is the first-ever Stanton City Council to vote to provide funding for our organization. I mentioned in a prior email to you all that the City of Stanton has for many years allowed space for the Talking Book Center inside the public library for our staff, along with some facility support at no cost to the TBC, and without which we could not continue to operate, and for which we have been and remain very grateful. But the direct financial contribution included for the first time in the approved Stanton City budget is also critical for us to be able to continue providing these important services to the blind and print-disabled members of our community who cannot access regular library materials. Just for a little background, although the TBC has an office in and provides services from the Stanton Library Building, we are not part of the Stanton Library. Some people get confused because it's in the building, but we're just a separate organization. And our patrons are those members of the community who are blind or visually impaired or disabled in such a way that they can't benefit from typical library materials and services. And we serve several cities and counties in the Upper Shenandoah Valley, Stanton Augusta, Waynesboro, but also Highland and Bath and Rockbridge Counties and the cities of Lexington and Buena Vista. All the materials we distribute are supplied for free by the National Library Service for the Blind and Print Disabled, which operates under the Library of Congress, but the services are provided around the US by a variety of state and subregional organizations, and we are one of those subregional organizations. And it's these library services that we, as a community, need to pay for. A little under 40% of our funding, so getting close to half, comes from donations and other fundraising efforts, while about 60% is provided by various governing bodies of the localities where we provide services. We can't operate without the localities pitching in, and we are so grateful that Stanton City is willing to join a number of other localities in the service area in helping to fund the TBC. So how much do these services matter to our citizens who need and use them? Well, the Talking Book Center sends, occasionally sends out a survey to its users, asking a number of questions about how the center is doing and how it can be improved. And one of the questions is, what would you like your city or county government funders to know about the value this service provides? So I just wanted to take a moment to share with you some of their comments so that you can hear from them directly. That's a little harder for many of them to come up and speak to. So I just looked at about 10 out of about 30 or more from this last survey. So it is a lifeline and a joy to have this available. "TBC has enriched my life. I am cognitive impaired. Without TBC, I would have never been able to enjoy and learn from books. It gives the opportunity to look forward to an evening activity without turning on the TV, which I have trouble seeing, promotes companionship with my wife. TBC really improves my quality of life. As I live alone and do not socialize as much as I used to, getting my books is a highlight of my day. Please tell them it has completely enriched my life. The TBC offers a service I don't think is duplicated by any other authorities. For my dad, who is in nursing care with macular degeneration, this service is vital and a large part of his day, for he loves to read and can with this. It is truly a godsend. Thank you. It's an incredible help to me and has greatly improved my quality of life. It is always there when I have free time, and I look forward to it every day. I have been a reader for 50 years. And finally, the true value cannot be expressed. It has brought so much joy to my life. So thank you for helping us provide this service."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kestner, is anyone on the phone?
No, sir. I have no one with their hand raised.
Would anyone else like to speak tonight on Matters from the Public? Well, this meeting stands adjourned at 8:05. Good night and thank...